Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September ninth, 2014 Town Council Meeting. It is six PM, the appointed hour. All of my council members are present and accounted for, thank you for that. And the first and second items on the agenda today are prayer and a pledge. And I would ask Chaplain Doug Farmer to please lead us in a prayer, and Mr. Glasson if you would lead us in the pledge.
Dear town gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day and for every day. And today we especially pray that you will wrap your arms of comfort and love around the families and members of the Department at Charleston County Sheriff's Department and the Charleston Police Department. We pray that you will give them peace in this time. We give thanks for Chief Ritchie, for Chief Williams, and their leadership, and all those who work for them. And we recognize and remember all the first responders and those who serve our country and keep us safe. Today we're reminded of the fragile nature of our earthly lives. And I pray that today we will all be encouraged to seek out better relationships with you, with our families, with the work that gives meaning and purpose to our lives, and find our place in our communities. I pray that you will give wisdom and guidance to the decisions made here tonight, and that you will be with each and every person here as they safely travel. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
If you pace a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Paglirini, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Madam Page.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paglirini. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I would ask for a deferral of item under Council New Business, item six A. Consideration of two eligible signs at Highway seventeen for placement of digital billboards.
You could vote on it, you'd have to get to the agenda item. If you wanted to remove it, you could ask to remove it from the agenda and put it back on at another time.
Okay, from point of order, it wouldn't be a deferral. If you'd like to remove the item until next month, you would ask-
Just remove it. Right. You can remove it at this point and then put it back on another time, or when it gets to that agenda item, you can incidentally-
Thank you. Since I placed that item on the agenda, I would then ask for that item to be removed at this time.
Right, and you have to vote on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we have approval of the agenda, the amended agenda.
We haven't voted on the first agenda.
So we, right, so asking for clarification.
Right, vote on the proposed change.
Okay. Okay. I would ask for a vote on changing the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? And the ayes carry. And I have a motion for approval of the agenda. Any other modifications to the agenda? Any other motions? So I do have approval of the, do any now a new motion?
Yep, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Item number five, public hearings awards presentation. Looks like we got some state champions in the house. Lots of-
First, please join me out front.
Lots, lots of red, white, blue.
Ladies and gentlemen of council and members of the audience, we have three state championships teams in baseball that we're going to recognize tonight. We have state championship signs that we're going to unveil for the first time, and they will also be posted at the appropriate ball fields in commemoration of their achievement. Folks, this year we had four teams in our baseball All-Stars. Cal Ripken advanced to the state championships in Aiken. Three of them won and advanced to the regionals. And we're here tonight to, to celebrate these three teams. And the fourth team by chance was runner-up. So we had a very good time up there, a very good showing. And just briefly of all three teams, the comments that I got back from other teams, from other recreation departments, was that these young men exhibited the qualities that we want to see in our young people. The sportsmanship, the politeness, their manners was very well much an, you know, exhibition during the whole time, and really made us proud that they were representing Mount Pleasant. And I'd like to give these teams a hand for that alone. Thank you. The first one we'll call up will be our ten-and-under All-Stars coached by Brent Fallow, Glenn Hill, and Matthew Whitmer. Would y'all please come up? Ten-and-unders?
Come on down, fellas.
Come on down. Their district tournament was in West Ashley. They went undefeated in the district tournament and with wins over Daniel Island, the peninsula of Charleston, and James Island. And they finished a championship game in the district with a nine-and-two victory over James Island. When they went to the state championship in Aiken, their victories over Aiken and North Augusta were very decisive. And then they really wrapped it up and won the state championship with an eleven-three victory over James Island to win the state championship. They advanced to the regional tournament in Matthews, North Carolina, held their own very well against some good solid teams. And again, like I said, they exhibited the characteristics like we like seeing in young people out here today. Even though they did not win the regional, they are our state champions, and I'd like to recognize them tonight. Ladies and gentlemen-
You need to come up to take pictures, come on.
Guys, when you get old enough, when you have children, you can take them to the field and show them that banner. They'll still be up there. All right, continuing on, our eleven-and-unders coached by Chris Stotman, Sean Craddock, Rick Farrell, and Andrew Van Deveen also took the path through the district by defeating West Ashley, but also defeating West Ashley again in the championship game to advance to the state championship. There they faced the two-time state defending champion Aiken on their home turf. And folks, they came away with eleven-to-five win. They defeated West Ashley and North Augusta again, and then sealed it up with a four-three victory over Aiken again. Our state champions. Guys, y'all come on up. They too advanced to the regionals in Bloomingdale, in Altamont Springs in Florida, and again exhibited characteristics like that I told you earlier. Could not be any more prouder than any one of these three teams.
Congratulations. Good job, guys. Good job. Good job, guys. Hey, how are you? Good job. All right. Good job. Yeah, man, we got you. Y'all did the work. We just helped a little bit.
Seven-and-under? Guys?
These guys are pros, they know how to take this picture.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
In case you're wondering, you've heard me mention several of the local teams up in the state championship. Ripken takes the winner of the regional and the runner, I mean, the winner of the district and the runner-up. And it just goes to show that if we have to beat them twice to get there, that's what we do. We beat them twice. All right, the twelve-and-under All-Stars. Guys, y'all come on up. Coached by Jason Aspel, Fred Holwell, Jason Shaw. Again, they went through district play undefeated, and went to the state championships in Aiken undefeated, where they defeated Aiken, North Augusta, and West Ashley.
Congratulations.
And again, defeated Aiken on their home field to win the state championship. They advanced to, let's see, where was the place they went to? North Surrey, North Carolina for the regional. They finished six out of twelve, and again, the same thing I heard again, complimented the boys on their sportsmanship, and even the umpire came up to them and said that they were a class act out there. And folks, that's what we want our young kids to learn. Let's give them a big hand. State championship, congratulations.
Coach?
Hello, y'all. I'm Coach Eleven-Year-Old Teen. Our family's around, we raised a bunch of money, take us to Florida, help us out. And we went through our money, got uniforms, got down there, made it back. And Eleven-Year-Old Teen wants to donate fifteen hundred dollars to M U S D Children's Charity.
Sergeant Les Malden, would you come forward, please, sir? Sergeant Malden is our Employee of the Month. May I, council members, ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Malden is being recognized this evening for his work in building relationships with the youth of our community, and for the work and the impact he's had on making our community a better place. He has really taken on the role of reaching out and creating ties to bind with the children of our community. There's three programs, at least three programs that I'm aware of. And the reading control is one of them that occurs once a month, third Saturday of the month at Barnes &amp; Noble, maybe some of you have seen it before, where children come and either a police officer or someone else may be there to read to the children. And the second one is the Blue Light Bowling at Sperry's, where, that was a summer program, correct? Where for two hours, a young boy, a young girl gets to bowl with a member of our police department, and in a non-enforcement type role, just to have fun and build-
[laughter]
And then, of course, we have the Buddy Card Program, which instead of trading baseball cards or basketball cards or cards of, you know, actors, they can trade autographs from police officers. And so it's really had a tremendous impact. And for the work that Les has done, not just representing the town of Mount Pleasant very well, but representing the town of Mount Pleasant Police Department very well, he's been awarded Employee of the Month. But it's one thing for me to say it, and I want to take a moment to brag on him a little bit longer, because I had a nice email from a member of our community who said this. It was a letter addressed to Chief Ritchie, and it said, "My daughter, grandchildren, and myself went bowling today at Sperry's Bowling Avenue." Have you seen this letter, by the way? You've seen it, okay, you know what I'm gonna say. "We noticed the police presence there and wondered what was going on. Inside, we saw a group, we later learned was the Blue Light Bowling Community Outreach." Sergeant Malden came over to us, introduced himself, and explained to us the reason he and his group were there. He advised us of the programs being offered and gave us information about them. I commend your office and these men for initiating this needed contact between your officers and the youth of our city. Such interaction can only lead to a better relationship between both groups. I would like to commend Sergeant Malden and the officers involved in this program. So Les, thank you for all your work. [applause] By the way, y'all are probably aware by now of the tragedy we had last night over in West Ashley, where a sheriff's deputy was killed and another wounded. And while we have our policeman here, our police chief here, and members of our police department along the wall, I'll go round and applause.
Well, thank you so much. I enjoyed having you going out there. You don't have to have me out there again.
We will.
Yeah, that's fair.
But next time we have something, you're done fine.
Okay, I brought today. That's not fair. You didn't ask me to bring over girls.
I can't, it seems Dick doesn't have that subtle hospitality that we all live with.
Oh, well, okay, we need to work with Mr. Gibson a little bit. Polly, pass it this way. I'm telling you, they- How exciting to have state champions in the house. That's awesome. Item number six on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August twelfth, 2014 Town Council Meeting, and the August 2014 financial statement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And the ayes carry. Correspondents and public statements, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
I have no one.
Moving on to, what? No one signed up to speak. Yes, that was correct. What's the date again today? It is September ninth, 2014. I think that's the first time since I've been elected that we haven't had anyone sign up to speak. Thank you, I appreciate that, you know? We can save it, though, you know? Ms. Farrell, it's all you. Under No Business, item number one, first reading, this is an annexation.
Yes, good evening. The first item we have actually is an annexation. This is for two parcels of land that are located on Highway seventeen, very near the intersection of Vining Road and Highway seventeen, and have been recommended for approval by the annexation committee.
First reading, orders one and two.
I have a motion and a second for approval of one and two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And the ayes carry.
First reading, ordinance number one four zero five eight, an ordinance providing for the annexation of two parcels of land comprising approximately .94 acres located at seventeen-eleven and seventeen-fifteen U.S. Highway seventeen north. First reading, ordinance number one four zero five nine, an ordinance to zone A B, area-wide business district, two parcels of land comprising approximately .94 acres located at seventeen-eleven and seventeen-fifteen U.S. Highway seventeen north.
Item number three is another annexation in pepper plantations.
That is correct, and it has been recommended for approval by the annexation committee.
First reading, orders three and four. Second.
I have a motion and a second for items three and four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And the ayes carry.
First reading, ordinance number one four zero six zero, an ordinance providing for the annexation of three parcels of land located on War Admiral Court and Pepper Plantations subdivision. First reading, ordinance number one four zero six one, an ordinance to zone Pepper Track P D C D, planned development conservation design district, three tracks of land located on War Admiral Court and Pepper Plantations subdivision.
Item number five is another annexation.
Yes, this one's located, Holston Road is located off of Vining Road, very near the properties that we just saw a couple items ago on Highway seventeen, and it is only an annexation request, no zoning, and has been recommended for approval.
First reading.
I have a motion and a second for first reading. Any discussion?
Just a quick question, ma'am. Ms. Farrell, about the property around that? Is all in the town that's around this piece?
No, not yet. There's still a fair amount in that particular area that's still unincorporated.
Okay. And I know, I know we're working on that, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes carry.
First reading, ordinance number one four zero six two, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately 1.0 acre vacant lot located at seventeen sixty-one Holston Road and Stony subdivision, known as Lot C of parcel one, identified by TMS number five five eight zero 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 one nine six, and shown in a plaque recorded at P B W dash one four five as a Charleston County RMC office.
Item number six is a first reading for a amendment to a planned development in the Sweetgrass Office Park Planned Development District.
Yes, the Sweetgrass Office Park Plan Development is on Highway seventeen. It houses, what was the crab house now is Soul. There's a vacant piece of property next to that, that there's a proposed hotel. Several years ago, when the hotel was approved for their site, there was a condition included in the plan development ordinance that would require a vehicular connection from the, the site, which has been highlighted all the way back to Sweetgrass Basket Parkway. The owner of the property has now approached planning committee more than once, went through the public hearing process with planning commission to request that that condition be removed from the plan development ordinance so that they would be able to build the hotel without having to install that connection, and that's been recommended for approval. The removal of that condition by both planning commission and planning committee.
Move for first reading. Second.
We have lots of motions and lots of seconds for first reading on this change, and it's been a long, long history here, and we hope this works out and we get a hotel built on that site. Yes, sir, Mr. Garchip, comment?
Yeah, dude, this, this sits next to the Soul Restaurant?
Yes, just on the opposite side of Stockade is the Soul Restaurant. Yes, sir.
I just, I would imagine then, I see the folks out there in the audience, good to see y'all, I'm imagining this is an opportunity where y'all look at how you can talk, do some shared parking, if possible, those type of things. All I'm saying is I stay ahead of it before it becomes a problem. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes carry.
First reading, ordinance number one four zero six three, an ordinance to amend Mount Pleasant ordinance number nine five zero four six, providing for a fourth amendment to P D, planned development district zoning relative to property now known as Sweetgrass Office Park Planned Development District.
Item number seven is a first reading for East Cooper Regional Medical Center, and has to do with their signage.
Yes, this is a request to amend the East Cooper Plan Development only for signage. I'm gonna ask Martine to go a couple more slides so that it can kind of show what was shown at the planning committee. Keep going, please, this one. There were a number of signs that East Cooper has requested for various reasons that were presented at both the planning commission and planning committee meetings to address some issues that they were having with folks knowing exactly where to turn off of Highway seventeen or Mathis Ferry, and then also some internal signage. They needed better directional signage, in particular with the new medical office building, which recently has opened, it's not shown on this aerial, which is dated, but in this general area. The applicant through the process has modified their request, and so what is shown on this map is they have removed from their request five different signs that they had originally asked for over on Bowman Road, a couple here on Hospital Drive, and then finally two on Mathis Ferry. So their request now only is this new number three, which will just be a blue H sign, internal signage here, a new sign for the query house, which will, which is getting ready to become a pediatric treatment facility, rehab facility, some additional directional signage through here, again, right next to the medical office building, and then finally, a new sign on the roundabout here. So this is what is reflected on this map is actually what the planning committee ultimately recommended. If you take all the Xs out, which the applicant is no longer wanting to pursue, this is what has been recommended for approval. What I would suggest is if the planning, I mean, excuse me, if Town Council is inclined to approve what the planning committee has recommended, since there have been some modifications through this process, it may be best if the applicant can provide us with a clean exhibit, which shows only those which are now part of the approval to avoid any confusion in the future. And if that is the case, and Town Council does approve this, this evening, then we can handle that through an amendment at final reading next month, just really swapping out the exhibits.
Move for first reading.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes carry.
First reading, ordinance number one four zero six four, an ordinance providing for the third amendment to planned development ordinance number zero five one zero four pertaining to East Cooper Regional Medical Center Hospital.
Moving on to Old Business. Old Business, number one, is a final reading for the code of ordinances, Design Review Board, and this is with some stipulations.
This is the text amendment that would require that all submitted for design review go to the Design Review Board. So there will not be the staff approval process except for what was approved with first reading, which is there is an allowance for minor projects that are less than $250,000. And the, the text that had first reading last month also provides that any projects that were already in the approval process will have until December thirty-first of this year to complete that process with the staff approval. If they don't, then they will have to go in front of the board. And that has, was, was what would have first reading last month.
Move for final reading. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mrs. Smith?
Madam Mayor, I would move to amend the minor project 250,000 threshold to 500,000 threshold as discussed last month, for the consideration for an amendment.
No second?
I'm sorry, was you, you asking her to amend her motion? You were making a separate motion.
I was asking her to amend the motion from 250,000 to 500,000.
Question.
Mr. Carrier?
She did say she amended it.
She did say she amended it.
The second was amended?
No, I'll withdraw my second.
All right, I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so we have amended on the table with 500,000, $500,000 as the placeholder for minor as opposed to 250,000, and we have a second, and we have discussion with Mr. Carrier.
Where did the 250,000 come from? Is it coming from committee?
No, well, it came from direction from committee, not the specific amount. Committee did not specify an amount, but instead directed planning staff to work with legal staff on coming up with something that could define a minor, minor project.
So that's when y'all came up with, with the 250,000?
Yes, sir.
Which was arbitrary. It was not discussed in our committee meetings, correct?
That's right.
We were just gonna let staff come up with a number.
It was discussed in general terms.
Right.
For the 250,000 is what was arrived, for your consideration.
Mr. Smith, do you have comment?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that legal told us that- Yeah, I just want to reiterate that legal told us that that was an arbitrary number, there was no scientific formula that the two hundred and fifty came from, and as the minutes reflect from last month, we discussed that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for improvements is a, is a very minor number to avoid having to delay small improvements happening. Mr. O'Neil, who withdrew his second himself last month, talked about the cost of a roof far exceeding the minimal two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at last month's meeting, so five hundred thousand dollars for renovation certainly seemed to be a minor effect. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I do have some memory about talking about this last month and about the figures, and about the two fifty and five hundred were discussed in general terms, and neither figure has a basis in science. They each have a basis in practical living and experience and, and just, you know, sort of a common sense application, I think, depending on whatever your perspective is. The one thing that I wanted to remind Council is if we adopt two hundred and fifty and we find that's unworkable in the future, nothing would prevent a future council from changing two fifty to three fifty, five fifty, seven fifty, or a million, and vice versa. So wherever we start this threshold for DRB, and it looks like the DRB concept is a go. Now we're just talking about really a threshold for when you have to go before DRB. Just remind us all that nothing here is written in stone, and it's not being passed down from the top. We make mistakes, and, and some, most of the time, I hope we get it right, but if this is something, whatever level we choose, that isn't viable, it can be addressed in the future. I'm a supporter of the two fifty threshold, by the way, I was last time, and I, I remain at, at that level, I just think that, that seems like reasonable amount of, of floor to me, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos?
Yeah, I agree with my, my colleague, Mr. Nichols there. I don't think anybody with a greater than half a million dollars is a minor amount of money. I agree that we, I think we should start at two hundred and fifty thousand. If we see that we should move it up, by, by all means we can, but I, I think staff came up with that, and I agree with them.
You missed Thomas S. Marshall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few years ago, when DRB was put, was disbanded because of the lengthy process and a no, number of different issues, and staff took over the review of all of the projects coming down the pipe, and it worked fine. Staff was operating great, developers and businesses that had to deal with the town planning department, I think, were relatively pleased, okay? It's been since the turnaround, when we look at whether it's two fifty, we're putting the Design Review Board back in place, and the number of two fifty would be for those businesses that comes to the town that do not want to go through the DRB process, is that correct?
The two fifty would only apply to very minor modifications, minor projects.
Right, and they wouldn't have to go through DRB?
They would have the choice. They would need to state with their application that they wanted to go through the staff review project and provide information that clarified that they were a, or verified, rather, that they were a minor project in compliance with the two fifty or whatever amount that may be.
And they have a choice, staff or DRB?
They could still go through.
Okay, up to the two fifty?
Yes, ma'am.
So let's say that two fifty wasn't the number that we agreed upon, all right? And it got to the point whereas the project now goes beyond that number?
They have to go to the board.
They have no choice whatsoever, they got to go to DRB?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, looking at it from that point of view, you know, are we trying to put the DRB back in place that would still enable projects to go through the process with DRB handling it? And if we set it at two fifty, are we putting those developers in a position whereas if they cannot meet the two fifty, it kicks them into the other bracket, and then they have to go to DRB?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? You know, that's the way I understand it. Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Christiane, minor improvements, if I were to improve the sandwich shop over, off Houston, off Mathis Ferry, and I needed to replace the roof and all of the HVAC in my minor improvements, would the HVAC cost be included in that two fifty?
It's not designer.
Yeah, so that, that would not be included, just the structure of the roof.
It's going to be the, whatever improvements you are making to the facade of the building, if you're adding new lighting, you want to add a porch, you wanted to, and I'm speaking more not new construction, but, you know, modifications to an existing structure, add handicap ramps. This does include, of course, too, what, because DRB does look at the site, it includes improvements to the site as well, so if there were site improvements that were being made, then that would be factored in, because somebody could be making only site improvements, but that would be factored in as well.
The most recent improvements that are happening at a restaurant that perhaps most council members would not be familiar with, at Fens, or the restaurant up the street there, the Mexican restaurant, dollar amount budget was, if we had to, because we didn't have that dollar, that in place before, we have towns not monitoring those, we wouldn't know that.
No, I'm sorry, I don't know.
So perhaps either one of those would be forced to go through DRB as they're trying to make a minor renovation.
But, for example, we've gotten a submittal, and this is, of course, what I would consider certainly to be a minor project, the Scotchman wants to add a beer cooler. That's probably going to meet two fifty or less than two fifty, so it's a minor project.
A beer cooler inside of a convenience?
No, it's somehow it's making a modification. We don't worry about, designer review does not worry about what goes on on the inside of the building, only on the exterior.
Yes, sir, Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, and that's, that's my whole point, is this is really a key area for helping to protect the entire town going forward, because what folks notice when they drive by something is they don't close their eyes and imagine what it looks like inside, because that doesn't affect them unless they choose to go inside, but it does affect them as they commute or they move about town shopping, whatever it is that they're doing. And that's why I really encourage us to, at least if we're returning to design review, and I think in the first incarnation, we didn't even have a minor projects exception, there was no talk, then it, then it was brought up very appropriately by Councilman Smith and others, that, well, we ought to look at, you know, a less impactful project as having a choice to go either way. And then a quarter million dollars to me is a substantive renovation of an exterior of really anything, and it's, and then we say, and then I want to change it by saying we're forcing folks to go through design review, as if that's being sentenced to a gulag and, and the worst case outcome. I just, I, the design review board is going to be made up of fellow citizens. I think in a few minutes, it's hopefully going to include either a engineer or a licensed general contractor, and some other folks in the field, and then some just citizens themselves. Let's, let's set this thing in motion, and then let's come back in, in whatever number, and I really would think the quarter million is a, is a good place, and then come back and revisit it as a council six months from now, or one year from now, or two months from now, after we get feedback from the participants that, you know what, it was a lot, it was horrible, it was all those things, it was, it was like, you know, supermax, and, and we got caught in it, and it cost a fortune, or it turns out that in the end, we produce for all our citizens a really much nicer projects, whether they're rehabs, redos of current places, or stuff that might be going up in the future. It also has, importantly, the, the stuff that's in the pipeline and so forth. I hope we could, you know, I just hope we could hold it to two fifty. We approved that last month, and I get that was a placeholder, it wasn't in that, the final sort of number was going to be tonight. So I just want to let you guys know, I'm going to vote against design review under, with the five hundred thousand dollar amendment. I hopefully I'll get a chance to vote for it with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, and, and give it a go.
Thank you. Councilman Glasson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not that I want to prolong the agony of our vote, but just as a comment with Mr. Nichols, the gulag, I don't think it's a gulag that Mr. Smith was referring to, but the fact that we disbanded that because there were some questions as to when that board was formed, of whether it was a rough ride through there or not, and in my personal opinion, I think we've got the professionally trained and adequate staff that with the guidance of council can handle the design review board. I understand it's probably not the majority vote tonight, and then we can change it at any time, and we keep reiterating that, we're a council, so he can step up to the plate or the new councilor, mayor, whoever that might be, so.
Thank you for that, Mr. Glasson. Yes, sir, Mr. Santos?
Madam Mayor, just for the record, I'd like to say, we never disbanded the design review board, I've heard that a couple of times, it's always been there, it's just been that we changed it so that they could come to staff instead of going to design review board, so I keep hearing it disbanded, it's never been disbanded. So apparently council has always thought enough of it, keep it there, and so I think it's a good thing, and, and I think two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, if somebody wanted to build a, a building and, and, or change their roof and put polka dots on the roof, I mean, if it's, you know, we would, we would need, if it's under five hundred thousand dollars, guess what? They wouldn't get a chance to see it. So the key is, I, I think that two hundred and fifty thousand's a good threshold, our professionals here at the town, our staff, came up with that number, I respect what they came up with, and I think we ought to at least give it a shot, and if it doesn't work, then certainly by all means we can raise it up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, just a final comment if I may, twice Councilman Santos has made reference to the outstanding staff, which I concur that we have, but finally I'll say, with all due respect, our legal counsel has stated twice, it was an arbitrary number that legal came up with to insert in that number, there was no scientific research or expert opinion from our expert staff in that, so that's a misstatement, and I just, clearly there's not support for the five hundred thousand dollar threshold, and it's disappointing to our fifty, over fifty, one hundred businesses that we have in this community, the odds of those businesses succeeding and working against them are already greatly in their disservice, and we have a commitment to economic development, so much so that we're hiring an economic developer for the town. I hope that the town is actually serious about business economic development and not wasting time and resources of our taxpayers' money if we're not going to be business friendly for the small businesses. I'm disappointed.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion?
Aye.
Yes, sir, Mr. Nichols?
Staff.
All right, first of all, I agree with Mr. Smith, the number was not, there was no modeling to come up with the number. On, I do want a clarification, though, and maybe the chair of our economic development committee could help me understand this, I thought that what, is there an exception? Or what exceptions? And I'll ask either Councilman O'Neil or perhaps you, Christiane, to remind me of what the exceptions are in this proposed statute ordinance.
There, there are only two, and one of them is the minor projects, the other one is economic development projects that actually have to be zoned, economic development or zoned, as many, most of our properties are on Wonday Park Boulevard, there's own planned development, but the uses are economic development, and that, those are the only two, the, the minor projects and E D.
Okay, so it's zoned, E D, economic development, whether the project is five million dollars or five thousand dollars, that would be exempted from DRB, and it would be a choice to DRB or stop it, is that right?
Right, for economic development, that's correct.
In other words, it would be the status quo, what we have right now?
Yes.
Along with properties such as Hubner, East Cooper Medical Center, those would not need to go through design review board either, because they're, they're planned development agreements that relate to economic development.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
One last quick thing, for Mr. Smith. Staff is staff. I don't care whether it's planning or whether it's legal, staff is staff, that's what I'm trying to get at. They came up with this recommendation, they're the professionals here, not us, and that's why I'm saying I'm going with their opinion, just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes, sir, Ms., Ms. Ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to request legal counsel in reference to withdrawing the motion in the second for the, I know there's a motion that's been made in second, and it's on the floor, and we haven't voted on it yet, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I forgot who made the motion, I think I seconded, I made the motion?
I believe you made the motion.
Okay, Mark, you seconded?
I think Mr. Nichols, I think Mr. Nichols moved it over that way.
I withdrew my second, and I believe Mr. Garret seconded the, the new motion.
I know, she's, she's looking through the minutes, lots of notes.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to speed up this meeting, clearly there's not support for the five minutes, so I withdraw my amendment.
That's what we're looking for clarification, because I believe, we have to go to see who made the original motion for clarification.
I think I made it.
Ms. Tex Marshall amended her motion to five hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Garret seconded the amended motion.
Okay, so, Mr. Parliamentarian, what would we need to have happen?
She'd like to withdraw the motion, and then the second would need to be withdrawn?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Garret?
Yes, sorry about that, y'all.
That's okay.
Everything's good.
Okay, you okay?
You may.
Okay, I am withdrawing my motion for the five hundred thousand, I believe you seconded.
I did, I'm happy to withdraw my second.
Okay. Okay, the vote on?
No.
Unless there's another amendment, you can move to, someone can, a motion to amend or a motion on the full final reading, only when it says is.
As is with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, that is my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, back to the original placeholder of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the exclusion of economic development property. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two ayes?
Final reading, ordinance number one four zero four nine, an ordinance to amend various sections of chapter one fifty six of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to design review board.
Final reading, number two, under old business, is that we change the makeup of that same board to have an engineer be either or, an engineer or licensed contractor.
Move for final reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for final reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number one four zero five zero, an ordinance to amend subparagraph four of paragraph A of section one fifty six point four two zero of chapter one fifty six of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to membership of the design review board.
Item number three and four both consider, concerning the Myrick Road, Rifle Range Road properties?
Yes, if you would recall, you had first reading on the annexation and the zoning last month, however, there was also a comprehensive plan amendment request that was not approved. The applicant now has requested deferral, a final reading of the annexation and zoning, he has submitted another request to amend the comprehensive plan that will be going through the process with the planning commission, and he is requesting that final reading be deferred until such time as the comprehensive plan can be, amendment request can be considered in conjunction with the annexation and zoning.
Motion to defer, number three and number four.
Second. I have a motion to defer items three and four on final reading, any other discussion?
That's until the planning, the comprehensive plan is blown wrong, that was, he's asked for what timeframe?
He has submitted another request to amend the comprehensive plan, that'll be going to the planning commission, so until such time as that particular plan, request can, can catch up in the process with town council, so this is at the final reading stage, the, obviously the amendment request will not come to you until October, and that would be for first reading, if it's even approved, and so this potentially could be November.
Okay, I have a, sorry, Mr. Garret?
All right, say thank you.
Oh, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor to defer?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes carry. Item number five is final reading on an ordinance which is an annexation, this is Raven John.
Move for final reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for final reading, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number one four zero five four, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately point six of approximately .63 acre tract of land comprised of approximately .36 acres of Hyran and .27 acres of Marsh, known as Lot 22, Block E, Ravens Run subdivision, located at 1818 Omni Boulevard and identified by TMS number 5610100019 and recorded in plat book BP 163 of the Charleston County RMC office.
Item number six is another annexation, this one Darryl Creek Plantation.
Madam Mayor, for final reading, the next three, six, seven, and eight are all single-family residential annexations, and I've moved for final reading on each one.
Thank you. I have a motion to second for final reading on items number six, seven, and eight, which are all single-family home annexations. All in favor? Aye, opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number 14055, an order providing for the annexation of a vacant parcel of land known as Lot 12, Darryl's Creek Plantation, identified by TMS number 596080012, located on Commonwealth Road and shown on a plat recorded at plat book PT, page 162 of the Charleston County RMC office. Final reading, ordinance number 14056, an order providing for the annexation of approximately 2.14 acre parcel of land known as Lot 27, Pepper Plantation, located on War Admiral Court and identified by TMS number 615000158. Final reading, ordinance number 14057, an order to zone PDCD Plan Development Conservation Design District in approximately 2.14 acre parcel of land known as Lot 27, Pepper Plantation, located on War Admiral Court identified by TMS number 615000158.
So for clarification, item number eight was not an annexation of a single-family home. It was a rezoning of the one that we annexed in the previous issue. Item number nine, final reading, and this is a lot amendment size for Porte Commercial District?
Yes, this is located, a vacant lot next to the storage facility on South Morgans, and it is an amendment to regarding lot coverage.
Final reading.
Second. I have a motion to second for final reading. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number 14048, an order providing for amendment to the Porche Commercial Plan Development District Ordinance. Ordinance number 96039 is amended pertaining to maximum lot coverage and maximum building coverage reported in thereof.
Thank you very much. Good work, everyone. On the committee reports, Accommodations Tax Advisory, we have some funding recommendations.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. There is a few, one report only on one action item. I'll go to the action item first. Funding request out of the fiscal year 2014. Special Projects Accommodations Tax Fund, committee met on Thursday, September 4th, to make recommendations for nine funding requests, which the committee received applications. The current balance available is $98,141. Councils received a summary of the request and the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for funding of the nine, Project Nine, request, which totaled $41,500. If the council accepts the committee's recommendation, this will leave $56,641 balance for the remaining of the fiscal year 14, 15 requests. So that math is done for you there, Madam Mayor. As such, I move that council approve the funding recommendations totaling $41,500 for nine items, including Men's Charleston Select Shootout 1500, Charleston Scottish Games and Highland Gathering 2500, Low Country Oyster Festival 7,000, Sprouts Musical Theater 5,000, Cooper River Bridge Run 5,000, Charleston Wine and Food Festival 6,000, Carolina Cup Challenge 10,000, Wando Invitational Volleyball Tournament 1500, and last, Madam Mayor, Battle of Succession deal for $2,000.
Point of clarification on Cooper River Bridge Run 5,000 or 6,000?
Cooper River Bridge Run is 6,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that was in the form of motion. Do we have a second?
I second that and have a question.
Thank you. A discussion? Mr. Garret?
Mark, I'm guilty of not thoroughly reading those minutes. I need your help. The Oyster Roast, they requested seven and were granted seven?
Thank you for asking. The Oyster Roast requested 10,000 and were committee granted seven.
And the Bridge Run, what did they request to receive the six?
It might be interesting for you to know, last year, Oyster Roast got 85,000.
Thank you.
And Bridge Run?
Yeah, the Bridge Run, what did they request?
Bridge Run requested 25,000, and recommendation is six. Holding the line for last year at six also.
All right, I just, I don't want to delay it, but I think about the magnitude of those two. The Bridge Run seems to be about 10 times the size than the Oyster Roast. Again, like I said upfront, I didn't thoroughly read those minutes, and I know I didn't come to meet them. I just wonder why the folks from Bridge Run, I guess they, they're getting funding from other places? They're not asking for, well, they are asking, excuse me, but they agreed to hold the line, I'm sorry. It just doesn't seem to add up for what it's worth, for the, for the impact to the, for the whole area, for the weekend that the two take place.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll also note, not either in support or against, you're out of discussion, but public services, the time and staff and commitment and rental for equipment and everything else, our commitment far exceeds $25,000, I'm sure, with fire and public services. So, not to say that that justifies not honoring the request in that amount, but just, just for folks out there who don't think that we only give six grand of Bridge Run.
Yes, sir, Mr. Nichols?
All right, I didn't know if we were going to take these as a package, if that was the intention, or one at a time. But I would like, and Mark, I appreciate the work that you and your predecessor, Elton, have both done in vetting these requests. There's no lack of requests, and there is a finite amount of money. Is this, Mark, is this the one where they throw out there the heads in beds type comment? That, that's, that's used as a, it's not the only measure, right? But it's a big measure, because the heads in beds comment comes from really the source of where the funds come from? Are these the hotel type taxes and so forth? And I guess I'm going to echo a little bit of what Paul had to say, and I'll pick on a different one. And again, they all sound like grand events to me. But for instance, Sprouts. Sprouts, musical, you know, I'm not exactly sure what it is. I tried to understand, it seemed like it was a local thing, and I was trying to imagine the heads in beds impact from Sprouts vice the Bridge Run. Even vice the Oyster Festival. If, and to Councilman O'Neill's point, I get there's the stuff that we don't count with the, you know, public services and all that, but it's hard for me to imagine that the Bridge Run, it's iconic. It's unbelievable. It's huge. The entire town, everything is just full up. I imagine the heads in beds figure on that is strong.
They're staying too nice at least.
Yeah, and making weekend. Vice Sprouts, which I have a sense was, is an important thing, music and artistic education. And, but maybe you could just help me understand how that committee as a whole, I understand you didn't make it, I mean, there's a whole committee deal going on here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'm non-voting of that committee. Thank you for that. Perhaps, as was in all of our meeting packets, I'll just highlight some of those items. The budget for the Cooper River Bridge Run is $2.3 million. Significant budget on that, and I think there are many factors that go into the decision. So to compare the dollar amount, in my opinion, for the two events is really not a valid comparison, in my opinion. If there's no appetite for the arts in general, which is not what you said, then perhaps one would perceive less value for that. But there's estimated in our notes, 10,000 people will attend, 42 performances. And the numbers meet. The committee does absolutely an outstanding job of vetting these things out, making sure that the formulas are met in these committee meetings. I would speak up and say that, Madam Mayor, we have an outstanding leadership in the Accommodations Tax Committee, and we have great members of the committee. They vetted out, guys, and they didn't fully fund these items. And I think they're good stewards of our money. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
I, I second all that. I could tell you, I served on ATAC years ago, and it was in disarray. I know Mr. Demore, he doesn't like that word, but he would, he would agree somewhat that we had issues. And it's come a long way, and they do do an outstanding job. My comments, while I said upfront, I knew that they would kind of touch off a little bit of discussion. It's, I didn't mean to make the comparison, nor was there any intent to take away. I'm just simply saying that, wow, that event, that one single event, and all that it means, because it's designed to come to us in, because bucks stopped with us. Outstanding committee. They watch the money. I'm just, I don't have any kind of numbers in mind at all. I just like to see more money go to that. Just general dialogue.
And I think we're all in, Madam Mayor, I think we're all in concurrent also, in agreement, I think, that Julian Smith, Bridge Run specifically, and his committee, do a first-class event that is second to none. And along with the heightened security, as Councilman O'Neill talked about, in addition to Jody and his fine crew at sanitation, they're, they're getting a significant amount of benefit from the town of Mount Pleasant financially, directly and indirectly.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
I will add, on the Bridge Run's behalf, that they've brought a couple of events over to Mount Pleasant, which weren't formally here. One being the chase to the Bridge Run, was held last year, huge success. And I think they're going to repeat that again.
That's right.
So we do get, we're getting now some more events over here. But with the heads in beds issue, every bed in Charleston's taken for this thing. So everybody benefits from the heads in beds. And we do our share of public service and police and fireworks. So, you know, we do, we do a lot for the Bridge Run.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have no other comments. I submit that in the form of recommendation.
Thank you, and we already have a second, yes. And Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, just a final question. If, if there were adjustments made, Mark or Elton, whoever knows a lot about this stuff, does it necessarily mean that it has to come off the line of a group that's had a recommendation? Or can you reach up into the larger fund balance? You following what I'm asking there? Suppose it was the will of the council to do, you know, pick another 10,000 instead of six? Would the four have to be found in the other nine recommendations? Or could you reach up to the fund balance? How does that work?
Mr. Nichols, it's my understanding this council has full authority to approve or not approve these amounts at the, at the leisure of the council.
I think he's just trying to make sure where that additional four would come from. It would come from the pot of the ATAC money. He would not take away from the province that have already.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Mr. Carrier?
Yeah, you could reallocate, or you could take from the balance remaining. Take it from the balance remaining. Now we've got other events kind of scheduled out for the rest of the year that would get hurt. And I don't know what those are, but I know that there is a, Ashley's here in the audience. She can tell you very bluntly what, you know, what, this thing is kind of a program thing, and we don't try and spend all the money every quarter. We try and hold back. So, you know, you're going to hurt somebody down the line if you take it from the fund. Now, if you reallocate, of course, that's a prerogative of council fund.
Yes, sir, Mr. O'Neill?
I'd also note that when we talk about the fund balance here, that all this money doesn't necessarily go to festivals and events. Some of this we use for other purposes within the budget, for bond obligations, certain recreation offerings, things like that. So it's not, this isn't, it's not as though all this money must get allocated to some charity hosting an event. There are other uses for this money for which we've, you know, we use within the budget process, so.
Thank you for that clarification. So I think at the end of the day, it's, are we comfortable with the recommendations of the committee? We do have a motion to second on that floor. Does that affect any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? And the ayes, Carrier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The report only of the, the new Wyndham Hotel on Stewart Eagles Boulevard will be opening next month with an official ribbon cutting in November. The inaugural Charleston Water Sports Week is occurring this month, and hotels were encouraged to track room nights associated with this event. U.S. Airways magazine featured Charleston area in their September in-flight issue. An estimated 6 million people will have the opportunity to view the extensive coverage, including a full-page article, Madam Mayor, on Mount Pleasant specifically. In this visual aids, we got a copy of that forwarded to us. We're pretty credible, including our beautiful Shem Creek and Blue Hall Plantation in our community.
Well, thank you. Moving on to annexation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Report only to committee, recommended approval of annexations of two lots on U.S. 17 North, three vacant lots in Pepper Plantation subdivision, and one vacant lot on Halls Pond Road has appeared on the agenda under planning new business.
Thank you. Bid to purchases?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One action item, the authorization to utilize capital project reserves for Fire Station Number Six. The committee awarded the contract an amount of $2,643,860 to GSC Construction Company to build Fire Station Six, contingent upon additional funds in combining, in combination coming from the capital project reserves and proceeds from the sale of the old Fire Station Three, sufficient to address the Station Six project budget requirements. As such, I move that council approve the transfer of funds needed to construct Fire Station Six. In other business, the committee awarded the contract to OL Thompson Construction Company to construct Phase Four of the Sweetgrass Basket Parkway in the amount of $5,896,966.25. The project is scheduled for completion with 220 days, and will support the new schools, which are planning to open in August of 2015. This concludes my report. One action item.
I'll second the motion for the fire station allocation.
Thank you. We need to get that fire station built. So we have a motion to second to transfer money to build Fire Station Number Six. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Didn't think so. All right, moving on to Economic Development Committee.
Madam Mayor, we did not meet. If we can get some schedules aligned, we will have a meeting next month with some interesting information.
Awesome. Finance Committee?
Madam Mayor, we did meet, and I'll go through several items that we discussed, and then some of them we might need to talk about later. I guess first, we had approval of Mount Pleasant Water Works debt. The committee received a request from Mount Pleasant Water Works to incur debt for the purpose of constructing various capital projects. Water Works intends to borrow $16.5 million in state revolving funds, together with a direct bank loan of $7 million. They also intend to restructure an existing variable rate $20 million 2005 B bond. The restructuring does not constitute new debt. Council may approve Water Works debt as they are a component, or must approve, not that you have to vote, but we're required to give them approval as they are a component unit of the town. Council will consider by ordinance and by two resolutions under Council on New Business, items 11A1, 11A2, and 11A3. Also, we had establishment of the sales tax credit factor. The committee received information regarding this year's sales tax credit factor. It recommends that a factor of .00040 be set for fiscal year 2014-15. And our town millage currently stands at 38.4 mils for operating and 2.9 mils for debt service, for a total millage in the town budget of 41.3 mils. A recommendation from the Recreation Committee to add an additional mil to the, of tax for recreation projects was introduced as a motion, but that failed at Finance Committee with a two-to-two vote. We, we will take this item up under item 11A5, and depending on the action bank, we may be able to set the millager, we may not. So we'll take that up later. Also, we heard information granting of an easement to Mount Pleasant Water Works to provide wastewater service to the White Hall Terrace Community Center. It's an easement allowing for the extension of a wastewater line and manhole to provide service to the community center. And council will consider granting this easement by ordinance listed under Council on New Business, item 11A4. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Fire Committee?
Madam Mayor, I just had a question for Chris, and maybe Charlie, whatever, whoever wants to answer it. What is, what is the total of our unappropriated balance now? Do you know? Charlie?
Financials is about $20 million.
About $20 million?
Yeah.
And I just had another question. It's, can we use, and I'm not a finance person, so I'm really just asking this because I don't know. But can we, can we issue bonds and pay it back with a million dollars' worth of bonds? Can we pay that back legally with our unappropriated fund balance?
We can do whatever, whatever the council desires with the unappropriated fund balance.
Okay, all right, good. That answers my question, then. Thanks.
It's kind of scary, Gary. You're like a, you know, you're kind of like a husband asking, a wife asking her husband, what's the balance on the credit card? That kind of makes me a little nervous. Just had to put that out there.
Can we pay back, can we pay it back with savings?
Our very favorable AAA bond rating is somewhat contingent on some money remaining in the unrestricted fund.
Just saying.
So tread lightly.
Charlie was looking for some oxygen.
I promise the dress I bought was on sale, there's no doubt. Fire Committee, we had no meeting. Fire committee, we had no meeting. Human resources?
No meeting, no report.
Patriots Point Development Authority did meet. We are moving forward. We have submitted information to the State Budget Control Board about the 50 acres of land for lease. We have named Bennett Hospitality Group as the developer of choice in that. We, of course, don't control what happens there. It comes from the Budget Control Board. And we will hopefully have that information in October to share with you. And we also had a memorable visit last week from Mr. Ross Perot, who made a donation to the Medal of Honor Museum and also is going to continue to help with the efforts to raise the money for the Medal of Honor Museum.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can you take that question? You may not have this information at hand. But with the award or up the Budget Control Board recommendation for Bennett, what are the odds that at some point down the road, we'll be able to have some sort of facility over at Patriots Point that could host a small convention, you know, that kind of thing? Right now, of course, we lose most of that to North Charleston and Charleston, if not all of it. We, is there any, do you have any insight on that or what they're going to do?
I have some insight. It's not all public information at this point. I can tell you that Mr. Bennett builds beautiful hotel facilities, and I would suppose he would come to council with, with the plans and ideas, and we'd move forward together.
That's in our waterfront gateway?
It is in our waterfront gateway, and there are some special considerations there.
Thank you.
Mr. Santos?
I was just gonna, just gonna say that I, that I had a good meeting with him the other day, and he showed me some plans. And I think you're going to be very impressed that he's ready to come out with what's going to be there. It's going to be one of the, I think, one of the top developments, you know, anywhere on the East Coast. And I thought, that's enough. That's all I can say.
I wanted to hear.
Okay, you asked for the credit card. Now we might have to shoot you, but it's okay, so. Planning committee. I know you met, Ms. Tomassina.
Yes, Madam Mayor. For all council members, I have one item to report on. And it is as directed by Town Council, the committee discussed the concept of a building height setback for the three properties on Coleman, Ben Sawyer portion of the urban corridor that are currently allowed 75 feet. The committee directed staff to meet with the three property owners to further discuss this concept and to report back to the committee. And once our planning department has met with and reviewed recommendations, they will report back to the committee, and we'll take it from there, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for that report, Ms. Tomassina. Police, legal, judicial, had no meeting, no report. Public services?
Public services did not meet, but no news is good news, Madam.
Thank you for that. Recreation committee?
Recreation committee did meet, and we had a fairly lengthy meeting. I'll go through the minutes, and we've got one action item that I'll cover at the end. We did approve two facility requests. We also reviewed and accepted as information the Senior Center Financials has requested and submitted them to Lieutenant Governor's office. As you'll recall, he visited our Senior Center and was very impressed, and would like to know, wanted to know how our operation structure was. So we sent that to him. The committee reviewed and discussed the organizational structure of area government agencies on aging. That's something that we were looking into and still are. We're pursuing that some more with, by getting some more information. The report was good initially from what we heard. Committee discussed recreation cost recovery and authorized staff to continue to work on recommendations. This is a process that we're going to try and hone in on as we, as we get more information. But right now, it's still in, in staff's hands to bring us some additional information. The committee did discuss applying for state funds for the completion of Carolina Park Recreation Complex Phase Two. And that'll be my action item at the end of the report. The committee also discussed and voted unanimously to recommend to the Finance Committee a one-mil addition to the tax bill of property owners for recreational capital projects. We had a discussion on this, and we voted unanimously to send it to Finance. You've already heard that Finance was deadlocked two-to-two in sending that recommendation to council. That's not an action item for me now. It is later in the report to be discussed, in the agenda to be discussed. My action item, though, is the Recreation Committee recommends to council to authorize staff to apply for state funding for the Carolina Park Recreation Complex Phase Two. These are monies that have been made available to us from the legislature. It's a one-to-one match. We can make the match with various funds that we have available. All we have to do is say yes.
Second?
Yes.
So we have an opportunity to say yes. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it. Transportation committee. No meeting, no report. We do have lots going on in transportation. Yes?
Real quick on recreation.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Demore, give us an update as to how close we are now to having sewer at our Carolina Park Recreation Facility.
Well, the line to present today, if you were to, if you recall the entrance road going to the park, about halfway up, we can reach over and get into one of the neighborhoods of Carolina Park, where water and sewer are present. We can connect into there and run it to, to a recreation complex. So it's just a matter of time and money to be able to do that.
Pete, do you have a number on that?
$500,000.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Back to recreation. I'd be remiss if I didn't speak up and brag on our very own. Ken Ayub and Gary Jester are heading up to Columbia. As Elton mentioned earlier, the Lieutenant Governor was here. They're going to be able to present to the entire Lieutenant Governor's Office on Aging Board that report personally, as well as some other significant things that we're doing so very well here in the town of Mount Pleasant. So we wish Ken and Gary the best, and we know they'll, they'll do a great job for us.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and we know they will. I look forward to hearing how they, how they respond to up at the Governor's, Lieutenant Governor's office. Water Works Commission?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Report only, as Councilman O'Neil mentioned earlier, the committee received information requests from the Mount Pleasant Water Works to issue new debt restructure, a variable rate bond issued in 2005. These actions will provide funds needed to accomplish a $40 million capital improvement plan. Water Works will borrow $16.5 million in two loans from the state revolving fund, together with a $7 million bank loan from TD Bank. The existing $20 million 2005 bond will be restructured as well to a fixed rate. The committee recommended the Town, the Finance Committee and the Town to grant, Mount Pleasant Water Works request to incur this additional debt for the purpose of constructing capital projects. This concludes my report.
Water supply?
This concludes both reports.
Thank you. Administration Department, Mr. Demore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, announcing three vacancies, one on the historical commission and two on the design review board.
Council on New Business, item number A, adoption of the loan application by Mount Pleasant Water Works.
Madam Mayor, I'd move for approval of items one and two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for items one and two under New Business. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's Resolution 14091 and Resolution 14092.
Item number three is a first reading for the issuance of a sale not to exceeding $7 million for the town of Mount Pleasant for a revenue bond and $20 million for a revenue refunding bond.
Please for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
First reading ordinance number 14066, supplemental ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a not exceeding $7 million Town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bond, Series 2014A, and a not exceeding $20 million Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding Bond, Series 2014B, and other matters relating thereto.
Item number four is a first reading for a grant from a perpetual easement relative to the Whitehall Terrace Community Center.
Please for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
First reading ordinance number 14065, an ordinance authorizing approving a grant of perpetual easement to Mount Pleasant Water Works relative to the new Whitehall Terrace Community Center.
Item number five is an ordinance to raise additional revenue and amend the budget of the town of Mount Pleasant for fiscal year July 1, 2014 through July 30, 2015.
Well, I can explain this, ma'am. If it were council's wish to raise additional mil for recreation, it would happen right here. And this would be the first reading of that ordinance. If it is not, then obviously it would fail. And I'd ask you to affirm the current millage rate and sales tax credit factor so we can submit it to the ordinance.
It's a pleasure with council.
Move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have some discussion. Mr. Santos?
Madam Mayor, that's, I mean, I guess you knew. That's why I asked that question a while back, just, you know, thinking out loud about our unappropriated fund balance. I know, I know Mr. O'Neil mentioned our AAA rating. What is, what is the actual balance that we have to have to have that AAA rating? Is there a specific balance you have to have?
Combination.
It's, it's somewhat unknown to us as far as projected growth of the town, projected revenues. There's no, no tabulated amount we're required to keep in fund balance to meet our rating. We send out information to rating agencies, and they reply to us to tell us if, what our rating is. So we just try to make sure everything's in as good a shape as we can have it when we send it to them. So there's not a magic number per se, unfortunately.
You know, I just, I, I, you know, I see that we have $20 million in our unappropriated balance, and I think that's a great thing. It's one of the most I've ever seen since I've been on council 13, going on 14 years. And I'm not, and I'm not sure, and I'm just throwing this out there for discussion, why we wouldn't, instead of raising the tax, we just raised taxes on the citizens, you know, recently, instead of raising another one, if it is impossible to maybe, you know, issue those bonds and be able to pay it back with some of that money. And so I throw it out there for guys like you who are a little bit more up on finance than I am to explain to me why we shouldn't or couldn't do that, rather than raise, raise the tax, the one-mil tax.
And I think the answer to your question is, you know, we certainly could. And I, I think, you know, as part of the discussion for this evening, and I would reserve these comments for later. But I think that's part of what I want to see, is if we're going to talk about additional costs for recreation and, you know, what it would cost to develop and what citizens want to see, what is the number and what is the cost for that? And then I think from there, we can decide if, if additional millage is needed, if we want to appropriate some from fund balance, if we want to go out and develop strategic partnerships with, you know, entities in the community. And that personally is what I'd like to see us do before we move forward with the millage increase this evening. So I, I, I think, let's come up with a cost, and let's see what it is to do what we feel like this council wants to do to move forward in recreation, so.
Well, I think Eric is telling us that the times are the essence for this, right, Eric, as far as the millage increase?
Well, it's, if you wanted to raise additional mil for this year, for this year for the tax bills that are going to go out pretty soon, you have to do it right now.
Right.
Or within the next two weeks. However, if you felt this is not the right time, and you wanted to wait for a later date, there's always the option when this, when a particular recreation project is designed, to at that point in the future, to be able to do it then. It's just, the critical path right now, the critical moment, is that we've got to get information to the auditor for the tax bill. So if you wanted the mil, now's the time to do it. If you don't, it just has to happen in the future if you want to do it at all.
When you say the future, how, what is the timeline in that future? Did we have to wait till this time next year? Or, I mean, if we raised a mil, or can be raised a mil after, say we missed this deadline, go out on these tax bills, and we, say for instance, we raised it in December, when would we be able to see that revenue to where we can start working on recreation?
The revenue would come in a year later. Taxes are paid in arrears. So that means it would be the tax bills that go out the next year for the year.
So we would lose a year on recreation if we went that route?
That's right. The driving factor, it seems, is the Rifle Range Road Recreation Park. That seems to be the driving factor. And I think when you look at Park West and that recreation complex, it was a four to five million dollar expenditure just for that on 40-something acres. This is much bigger than that. So with today's inflationary dollars, if you wanted to go ahead and move quickly on a first phase of Rifle Range Road, then it would be now, and knowing that one mil would generate you a half million dollars, you could do a 10-year bond that brings you in $5 million. After you get done paying debt service, it gets you to 4.2. That would provide you the money right away for the first phase of Rifle Range Road. But you could do that tonight, or you could say, hey, if the Rifle Range Road project is a project you want to look at, you could say, let's wait and get it designed, see what the components are going to be out there, and then you may choose to raise millage at that point in time. So choice is yours. There's, I just want to be clear that, that there's a rush if you want to get it in for this tax bill. But if you're looking at trying to get money in for a project, you've got time on that.
Well, I agree with Chris, because we, you know, we've had that discussion about being able to go out to the citizens and let them know our plan, what we, what we would like to do with that money. Instead of just raising a mil and then deciding what to do with the money, I, I think that we need to have a plan to be able to go out to them and say, this is what we'd like to do. And I, and I really think that, you know, maybe an option might be using some of that unappropriated balance. I'm just throwing that out there rather than, you know, raising taxes again on the citizens. And, and I would have to, you know, open it up for discussion, because like I said, I'm not an expert on financing. And if that's going to hurt us, then certainly I don't want to do that. But, you know, I'd at least like to get some more information, and I knew the Finance Committee would be the one that could probably get this information and give it back to us, you know?
I certainly think that can be done in conjunction with, as Mr. Demore stated, we, we need to develop a plan for that site, figure out how much it costs. Is the school district going to have a stadium on that site? Is a bond referendum going to pass in November? I, I, these are all questions I believe at this point in time are just unknown to us as a council and the citizens of this town. So that, that's why caution. But as a point of clarification, you know, I, I read the first reading, the motion and the second that's been made. Does the motion and the second that's been made reflect the additional mil? Because it doesn't, so this, this is reflecting the additional mil. That is the motion and the second for us. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garch?
Thank you. That was going to be part of some of my questioning. Mr. Demore, you went into some of this in honor of the process and protocol. A favorable vote on this item tonight means what?
It means instead of the three mils that council has already raised on people's taxes, it'll be four mils on the bills that go out by the treasury.
And this additional mil that we retired to those mils, it has no sunset clause.
Correct.
And what do we have coming up in our special council meeting that pertains to millage increase?
That would, that is this. If council saw this favorably, then we'd have to turn around rather quickly to get the bills, I mean, to get the information to the auditor, and that's for that. So if this fails, there'll be no need for that special council meeting. But we did have another item tied to it. Was it comp plan?
No, it was, I think it was digesting of the comments.
And that could be done in committee or some other agency.
Well, obviously, because y'all, y'all, you saw my, my thought process on our three-mil increase when we started those discussions at a retreat, when I was adamant upfront about a plan, and that that money had to be used for those projects and nothing else. And I would take it, because for example, the three mils that we've approved, it comes into the general fund collectively. But it has to go by law to those projects that we named it as. It doesn't get just thrown into the general fund. Same thing here. This one here would go collected in, and if approved, it would go into the recreation budget. At this time, of course, no set plan for that has been determined. Obviously, based on all that, I'm, I'm not comfortable supporting an open millage increase like this, just like I was before with the three mils, without any kind of defined plan. Because while I hear you exactly on Rifle Range, I'm also thinking, we're this close down having sewer at a class facility where so many of our kids go every single day at Carolina Park. And we don't have sewer there, so I, you know, it's, my friend, Mr. Duffy's still in here. And I know he's, after we just approved all those things, I know he'd love to help us out on figuring out how we can split that $500,000 to get sewer over there, since we're all in this together. But it's been always good to see you play. But anyway. It's all about having a plan for me, and that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Paul. Mr. Glasson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Demore, a question on, you alluded to the design phase. Is there, by not approving this, is there any delay as that moves forward?
No, sir. Yourself and council have appropriated $240,000, I think it is, for a conceptual design in this year's budget, so that's proceeded.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, I, I, I can't seem to bring myself to want to support this initiative. I know that's going to be a surprise to some of you, but I would just, it's a great project. It's a great opportunity, and had something like this been proposed with the millage increase, the three-mil increase originally, I could have perhaps wrapped my head. increase, the three-mill increase originally, I could have perhaps wrapped my head around that, but with the three-mill increase, with the stormwater fee doubling, the business license increase, and with the building permit fees increased this year, council members, Madam Mayor, I just want to point out the obvious, this would be number five tax increase. And I agree with Councilman Santos, I also am no mathematic expert, but if more money comes out of my pocket and is made payable to the town of Mount Pleasant, that adversely affects me, and so I, I wouldn't be supporting this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Yes, sir, Mr. Garch?
I didn't, I realized, Mr. Demora didn't finish. In the event that this should not pass, and it's on our, it's on our agenda for the special council meeting coming up, right?
Correct.
Either way, it's going, it's on the agenda. And I know that I specifically asked for some information, obviously, because in recreation, my opinion, it's a user fee. Not everybody, not everybody uses recreation, so, but I'm, I'm not gonna get into, no pun intended, the turf war over that type of thing. So I just realized that you've got some time to think about it, if it's not favorable, it's coming back at us. What is that, 20 seconds?
I think the plan, sir, if, if I, my communications with the mayor were, if I understood them correctly, I think it would be if this did not pass, that I need to come off. There'd be no reason to talk about it again.
Well, that's why I was asking that question. Thank you.
You know, and this is all good discussion, I really appreciate it. It's hard to sit here as the first mayor that's raised taxes in the town of Mount Pleasant in 20-plus years. We continue to talk about taxes, but you know, it's okay to talk about taxes, because taxes are important to the services that are provided to the citizens, and the citizens have had to say, you know, they did ask for more recreation, they did say they were willing to pay for it, but I echo your sentiments. I'm not opposed to a mill increase for recreation. I'm opposed to not having it tied to something that have, you know, perhaps a, a very clear vision of what that is. So, you know, I don't know that we couldn't revisit this in the spring, I don't know if we couldn't revisit it in the budget time. It's up to you. We have a motion on the table to approve a mill and a second. Do we have any other discussion? So would you like me to call for the vote, or would you just like to vote?
Let's just vote.
Vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Madam Mayor, I move that we set the millage rate at 38.4 mills for operating and 2.9 mills for debt service for a total millage of 41.3 mills, and send this to Mr. Tethlinburg for the tax bill.
Second.
And also, need to introduce the tax credit factor into that same motion, which Finance Committee recommends in a factor of .00040.
Same second. Thank you.
Yes, sir, did you have a question, Mr. Santos?
Well, I want to make a motion if I could. That's all right.
We had a motion, and we have voted on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And we have the motion now to set the revenues to send it to Mr. Tethlinburg and the sales tax factor.
Go ahead, I'll wait until after that, go ahead.
Okay, do you have a second on that, Mr. O'Neill?
Nichols.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to set the mill rate and the sales tax factor and set it to the auditor's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we appropriate 500,000 out of the general fund for the sewer connection, water connection that our administrator talked about for the Park West facility.
Carolina Park.
Carolina Park, I mean, I'm sorry, not Park West, Carolina Park.
Second.
Want a clarification?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Glasson?
Unless I'm, is it, I'll defer to Mr. Potts, is it called, just for accuracy, would be the fund balance you're looking at, Karen, or that?
Fund balance, yeah.
That we don't have a general fund? Just the fund balance?
Right.
Is that what you?
You want to take this money out of the general?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find, what pot he wants to pull it out of, Mr. Potts.
I want to pull it out of the savings account.
So the fund balance?
That's unassigned, unbalanced.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, it's, thank you, we have almost a quarter million dollars set aside right now just for a water and sewer connection for Carolina Park, but it's not enough to reach it. And we think if we're successful, and we think we will be, receiving this grant at state level, that'll, that'll provide us enough money to go ahead and break that connection.
Okay, I missed that, I'm sorry.
If we are not, if you'll allow us to come back to you and perhaps reconsider that motion.
Good.
I'd just say, I'm not gonna gum things up, but if we had support and move forward now, and you still push for it for the grant, couldn't you take that money and put it back and replace the money we just used, or you don't want to gum that out?
You could, I'm just very weary about the impact it's gonna have when our bond raters see us allocating 500,000 out of our fund balance.
Fair enough.
Okay. Well, the money's, it's forthcoming, so is what you're telling me, that it's so?
If there's an issue, I'm, it's okay, I'll pay it.
Then I'll go ahead and remove my motion.
I'll draw my second.
Okay, withdrawn, no other discussion then?
Yeah.
Mr. Carey, did you want to say something? Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I have a question, maybe you could help me with this, this actually came up. When we, when we make application, I guess in this case it's for state, not federal, matching funds, a grant?
Correct.
Are there strings attached to that? Why would, why would every city in the state of South Carolina make that application?
I suppose they're welcome to it. We feel we have, there's not a string, but there is a requirement. The requirement is that it be towards sports tourism, and we feel that our argument will be stronger than most other applications that are there, which at some level, which we believe that at some level we will get funded.
Such as soccer.
Exactly.
And that came up, not only, people I respect asked me to inquire about that, they thought it was federal money and, you know, this and that. What is the timeframe on something like that as well? Does that get dogged down at the state level, or does it move faster than we all think?
It's already been appropriated in the state budget, and based on your approval tonight, we'll proceed with an application, and I suspect the turnaround to be just a few weeks.
Okay, so before the end of the year, is super fair to suggest?
I think that's, all right, that's great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much, just for clarification. Thank you, no other action on that item. Item number six was removed, the consideration of two eligible sites on Highway 17 for the placement of digital billboards was removed from the agenda earlier. B, old business, there is no council old business.
No way.
No way. We do have a need to go into executive session for some legal and contractual and personnel issues. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
No votes taken? No votes taken. No votes taken.